At seven o'clock, like to call to order November 10th, 2025 Town Council Meeting. Please stand for the pledge. With our Scout Master lead us, please. Thank you.
What?
Europe. You get the first proclamation, please.
Need help with that?
No, I don't think so. I may need a lift.
And Amy, if you want to invite him up too.
Yep. Okay, this is a proclamation, whereas the Scouts BSA helps train the youth of our community with skills which will serve them well in the future, and whereas many of our youth participate in activities of the Scouts BSA which benefit our community, and whereas one of the crowning achievements of scouting is the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Devion Bordloy from Troop 170 Scouts BSA completed the requirements for Eagle Scouts, and whereas Devion Bordloy used his Eagle Scout project to build a Gagaball game pit at East Farms Elementary School. The game pit was built with safety and accessibility in mind, which include rubber flooring and wall bumpers to minimize the risk of injury, and an ADA accessible door was installed as well, and whereas Devion Bordloy's project involved the careful planning and design of the Gagaball game pit. With special attention given to safety, accessibility, and durability, every aspect of the layout was thoughtfully considered to ensure that the space would accommodate children of various ages and abilities while maintaining a fun and inclusive environment. And whereas, having lived in Farmington most of his life, Devion is currently a junior at Avon High School. He was the lead programmer on the robotics team which earned the team first-place honors in local and statewide competitions, and the team was ranked 18th at the world competition. He earned a black belt in taekwondo. He participated in Junior Achievement Stock Market Challenge. He plays the guitar, piano, violin, showcasing a wide range of musical talent, and he is currently earning eight languages demonstrating exceptional dedication, curiosity, and cultural awareness, and whereas, as a result of Devion Bordloy's outstanding efforts on behalf of the children of our community, the game pit will provide the children with a fun, engaging, and long-lasting recreational space that encourages both physical activity and social interaction. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend Devion Bordloy our best wishes, and we hereby proclaim November 10th, 2025 as Devion Bordloy Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 10th day of November, 2025, Joe Capitofaro, Chair, Farmington Town Council.
If you stay right there, Representative D'Amico has a proclamation for you also.
Mr. Chair, I just have to say, for those of us who can barely speak one language, eight languages is pretty impressive, so I give you a lot of credit, Devion. Nice, nice. So I have a citation from State of Connecticut General Assembly, official citation introduced by Representative Mike D'Amico, Representative Rebecca Martinez, Senator Derek Slapp, and Senator Rick Lopes. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly offers its sincerest congratulations to Devion Bordloy in recognition of your elevation to the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest achievement in scouting. You can be proud of the good work that you've done for your community, which will benefit from your dedication and perseverance. The personal qualities that have enabled you to reach this goal will serve you well in your future endeavors. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success, and it's given on the 10th of November, 2025, at the state capitol in Hartford, and it's signed by the President of the State Senate, Martin Looney, Speaker of the House of Representatives, Matthew Ritter, and Secretary of the State, Stephanie Thomas. So congratulations and good work, Devion.
Andrew.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everyone's well, and thank you for coming out. This is an honor for me to do this. I'm a classmate of Andrew's father, Dave, from Farmington High School, so it's nice to have that connection and to see the next generation coming up through town and doing their service for our community. I know this is not the first time for you, and I'm sure it's not going to be the last time up here being honored, so it's great, great pleasure to know that you're working so hard along with all your other friends and classmates and the camaraderie that you guys bring together, so well done. Whereas the Scouts BSA helps train the youth of our community with the skill which serve them in the future, and whereas many of our youth participate in activities of the Scouts BSA which benefit our community. Whereas one of the crowning achievements of scouting is the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Andrew Tabal from Troop 170 Scouts BSA completed the requirements of Eagle Scout, and whereas Andrew further enhanced the Lieutenant Vincent Core WW2 Plane Crash Memorial, which was originally completed by his father for his Eagle Scout project back in 1987. Whereas while flying a P-47 Thunderbolt aircraft, Lieutenant Vincent Hugh Core lost his life during a 1945 training mission. The WW2 crash site is located in the Farmington Town Memorial Forest in Farmington, Connecticut. And whereas Andrew's Eagle Scout project was further to enhance the WW2 memorial site by constructing a professional informational kiosk detailing the events of the crash while revitalizing the existing memorial, and constructing a half-mile of the trail leading to the site utilizing over 30 volunteers who collectively contributed over 360 hours of work. Whereas Andrew attends Farmington High School as a dedicated trumpet player like his dad, performing for the Farmington High School Jazz Band, Wind Ensemble, the Valley Community Baptist Church Orchestra, and Taps Across America. He serves as lifeguard and swim instructor for the YMCA Chase, and has also volunteered and fundraised for many worthy causes. Whereas a result of Andrew Tabal's Lieutenant Vincent Core WW2 Plane Crash Memorial project, the lives of the residents of Farmington will be impacted in a meaningful way for years to come. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend Andrew our best wishes and hereby proclaim November 12th as Andrew Tabal Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Dated on the 10th of November, 2025, by myself, Joe Capitofaro, Chair.
Come on, Dad, want to come up and take a picture?
Sure.
Come on. And then we'll get... No, have you guys take a picture with your son? And you have Representative D'Amico coming up too for you guys.
So, Mr. Chair, it's particularly gratifying for me to give this citation to the third member of the Tabal family to get a legislative citation. Dad, and then your older brother, and now you, Andrew. So congratulations to you and the whole family. So, State of Connecticut General Assembly official citation introduced by Representative D'Amico, Representative Martinez, Senator Slapp, Senator Lopes. Be it hereby known to all, the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Andrew Tabal in recognition of your elevation to the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest achievement in scouting. You can be proud of the good work that you have done for your community, which will benefit from your dedication and your perseverance. The personal qualities that have enabled you to reach this goal will serve you well in your future endeavors. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Given on the 10th of November, 2025, at the state capitol in Hartford, and it's signed by Martin Looney, President Pro Tem of the State Senate, Matthew Ritter, Speaker of the House of Representatives, and Stephanie Thomas, Secretary of the State. Congratulations, Andrew, and nicely done.
We got one more. Thank you. It's no problem.
This is our proclamation for Veterans Day. Whereas, citizens of our country are justly proud of the men and women who have fought to defend the principles of liberty and freedom on which our nation was founded, and whereas from the Revolutionary Era militias through today's sophisticated defense structure, American servicemembers have defended our country in times of challenge, brought honor to the United States, and created a solid foundations for its continued security, growth, and prosperity. And whereas, despite the tremendous perils and pressures of wartime, our armed forces have defended the country with conviction and courage. In admiration of the strength of our convictions, other nations have looked to America for leadership, and our allies have always been secure in the knowledge that our proud country will not allow its principles and beliefs to be compromised. And whereas, the citizens of the United States will forever owe an immense debt of gratitude to our veterans for the sacrifices they have made to secure the safety of our country, and whereas, as an expression of that gratitude, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed into law an act calling for the observance of Veterans Day on November 11th each year, and in 1921, that date was originally designated as Armistice Day in remembrance of the end of World War I, and as a perpetual reminder of the blessings of peace, and by 1954, the observance widened to honor courageous veterans from all foreign conflicts. And whereas, our veterans reflect the preeminent qualities of patriotism and courage in all of us, and continue to make countless contributions to military and civilian life. In addition, many men and women from Connecticut are in the National Guard serving our country along with many other Connecticut residents serving with the United States Army, Air Force, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, and Space Force. Now therefore be it resolved that the Farmington Town Council hereby thanks the many contributions and accomplishments of all of our veterans. Dated at Farmington, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this the 10th day of November, 2025, signed Joe Capitofaro, Chair.
Thank you very much. Now if you would like to exit, you're more than welcome to. Thank you very much for all your support, guys. Well done. Take care. Congratulations. You're very welcome. We'll give it one second, and then we'll... Okay. We'll move on to E, new items, which we haven't done. We'll go to F, public comment. If anybody's inside the council like to make public comment, please walk up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Tim Kelly, 62 Westview. With the elections now behind us, it may be tempting for the council to put itself on a glide path to the holidays, but I think this council has a little more work to do related to current fiscal issues. I want to remind the council of an important discussion we had in the March budget meeting with our school department, and I would encourage each of you to go back and watch the first five minutes of the videotape of your March 12th council budget meeting. As you know, the biggest obvious driver of a school budget is the actual number of students enrolled in a given year. This dictates the number of teachers, resources required, French fry forecasts, and everything else. In the March budget meetings, we were given an enrollment projection for this current year from a new consultant who gave Farmington schools an outlook of 4,100 students. This enrollment projection was well above that of our usual consultant and our in-house analysis referred to as the push-up report. Notably, it was called out in the March budget meeting that the new consultant, MP, had done enrollment projection for a neighboring school district the year before and had greatly overestimated their actual enrollment number. Still, our school leadership team insisted that 4,100 students was the funding required, and we gave it to them. But when the actual Farmington schools enrollment numbers came in, our enrollment was only 4,000 students. So that's 100 students less than the projection offered at collective decision time, and a big miss for a town such as Farmington. Since we fund education at over 20,000 per student, then 100 students times 20K is $2 million of overfunding. For instance, we need three less kindergarten classes this September. That's three less teachers up front along with chairs, classrooms, computers, crayons, et cetera, which is about half million dollars right there. This council needs to claw back up to $2 million from the school budget and return it to the town general fund, or at least claw back 1 million if you're concerned about pulling funds mid-year. Look, it's not just about the money, it's about keeping integrity in the fiscal process. Now, school leadership may try to position this budget padding as some kind of innocent anomaly, but remember, this plan was presented, endorsed by a 15-year veteran superintendent and a Board of Ed chair with 20 years' experience. We probably should have seen this coming, folks. At this point, I might expect responses such as, "Well, we need the extra funding anyway for handling increasing special needs." We already issued a big increase to special services funds in the March budget cycle. Also, we had over 300,000 of special needs funding that was not used last year and rolled into this current school year budget. The other rationale that may be offered is that Farmington Schools is now afraid that some federal funding may disappear. Not likely, or worst case, maybe partial. Regardless, we receive very little federal academic funding, about 1% of what Farmington Schools spends. So at a minimum, you need to have responsible folks come in here for a mid-cycle budget review and detail where the excess budget money is being spent or held. I would recommend that you reset and recover budget funding for this current fiscal year so it can be allocated to other town priorities. I'm sure it's not lost on this council that 1 million dollars buys two miles of asphalt, or that state-of-the-art fire truck costs over a million dollars, or that our town pension fund, which covers a bunch of school employees, is significantly underfunded at this time, or that we have over 1,400 SNAP recipients in Farmington, many of whom may be children. So I appreciate your prompt attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else inside like to give public comment? Then we'll go to online. Anybody online, Cap?
I do not see any hands raised.
All right, we'll give it one second. Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay, and we will close out public comment. Go to G1, please.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the October 14th, 2025, regular Town Council meeting.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the October 28th, 2025, regular Town Council meeting.
Second.
Motion second. Any corrections on this? I don't see anything. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. H, Communication Written and Appeals. We don't have any, so we'll move over to Report of Committees. The 1920 Building Committee, everything is going great up there from top to bottom, from the roof, as I said last time, from the dome to their painting, finishing up work down to the bottom floor. The bricks should be hopefully in in a couple of weeks, we'll start laying out that. Kathy will be reaching out to you guys, trying to set up tours for people before the end of the year so you guys can get in there and check out all the progress that's being made. And we'll move over to Ad Hoc Fire Station Committee.
Yes, we had, our last meeting was on October 24th, 2025, and we met with Chris Snardi of SPNA Architects. We needed some more of his time to look over the drawings or the plans that we had. We added a few more new considerations, and we're waiting to hear back from him for our next meeting.
Yeah, I think we're at a critical point. We're at the final part of making our recommendation for the charge, and I think Amy's spot on where we just needed a little more information regarding some things that tungstous hose and things like that that Chris is helping us with, and as soon as he reports back to us and is ready to meet, we're going to meet, and I think we'll be at a good spot to make a good recommendation.
Thank you. Sidewalk Committee.
We have no new news since our last report, but Brian and I are actually going to get together at the end of this meeting and with our next meeting on the calendar, so we'll have something for you proudly next week.
Thank you. And High School Building Committee.
I have nothing new since the last report. Our next meeting is the 19th at 5:00 PM.
All right, thank you. Move over to J, Reporter, Chair, Council and Committees. For my chair report, obviously the election is done, 41% of the people came out to vote, so if someone's upset, if you didn't vote, then you can't be upset. Congratulations to all the winners. Well done. Today is the 250th birthday of the Marine Corps. I want to say thank you to all the Marines out there for your service, past and present, especially to my father-in-law, Lenny Ronaldini, for his service as a Marine in the Vietnam conflict. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. There'll be a ceremony outside here at Town Hall at 11:00 AM. Hope to see all of our veterans there, and again, a special thank you to all of our veterans, past and present, for your service to our country. We'll move over to Board of Education, please.
The Board of Ed has had two meetings since we last met, October 21st, and a special meeting on October 27th. They have reported on the student assessments, and Farmington continues to do well as compared to the benchmarks that it is aiming to meet. There's continued growth. Special education does continue to be a driver for budget costs. They did make note at the last meeting that they did not have to hire three kindergarten teachers due to the enrollment, and my understanding is that they'll be looking at not using the consultant next year, but don't quote me on that because that was my recollection. And at the special meeting on October 27th, they announced the new superintendent, Jess Janini, who was an assistant superintendent at Avon and is now coming to join us. Everything I've heard about him is great, and he will, his first day will be January 5th of 2026, and it's my understanding that as he's available, he'll also be in our school system, shadowing Kathy and getting used to Farmington even before his effective date. The Board of Ed's next meeting is next week, November 17th, at the high school.
Thank you. And we'll stay with you for Conservation and Wetlands.
Conservation and Wetlands, last met November 5th. As I reported last time, it's a lot of routine applications and approvals for additions on homes, driveways, parking lots, things like that. There are, there was a report regarding updates to the tungstous country club. They've been working on some stormwater management and other work to take care of some overhanging trees, some drainage soils that were clogged, and general upkeep of the facility. And at the last meeting, they also conducted their election of officers. There have been no changes. The chair will be Ned Statchen, Vice Chair Robert Eisner, and Secretary Dave Fox. Their next meeting is December 3rd via Zoom.
EDC.
Yes, the last meeting that we had was on Wednesday, October 15th, and don't have much to report since then, but Wednesday this week is the EDC breakfast meeting, and our next meeting is the same day at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. And TPZ.
The last meeting of TPZ was Monday, October 27th, 2025. I would say the agenda item that I think I'm going to focus on tonight is something that, there was a public hearing that night, and I had already kind of identified that, but that public hearing has been now continued because the next TPZ meeting is going to be this Wednesday, November 12th, in that Town and Planning Zoning Commission, the application for a text amendment to the Regulations for Zoning, Article 1, Section 9, Definitions Article 2, Section 1, Residential 80, 40, 30 Zones, Permitted Uses Article 4, Section 8, Off-Street Parking Standards, Section 8A, Parking on Residential Properties, Commercial Vehicle Parking and Associated Text Edits to Section 8B and Section 13. So that's kind of like the legalese aspect of it. I think people should, if they're interested in this text amendment about, you know, how parking is handled and kind of how it's kind of framed for residential zones, this would be a time to maybe look at the website, kind of look at all the information regarding this text amendment change, and then have your opportunity on Wednesday to come and express your view one way or the other.
Thank you. We'll move over to K, Reporter, Town Manager.
You have the written report in front of you. As you mentioned, Joe, we have a Veterans Day ceremony tomorrow at 11 o'clock at the Town Hall. I am pleased to report that Moody's have reaffirmed the Town of Farmington's AAA bond rating, the highest rating a municipality can achieve. Like to thank Joe and his staff for all their hard work on that. We also had our bond sale results, and you can see the memo from Joe that we had $22,500,000 a bond issue of 2025, and we were pleased with the results there, so we did that. Dave, I put a little note in about the Tinty Barn for you. It's, by my understanding, I've been out there, they are moving along, so it looks good. And just a reminder that prior to the next Town Council meeting on December 9th, there'll be a reception honoring the outgoing members of the Farmington Town Council from 6:00 to 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Pavilion.
I did, I saw a crew out there on Saturday.
Oh, good.
Working on the weekend. Can I have a motion to accept the Town Manager's report?
Second.
Have a motion second. Any questions for Kathy before we move on? Well, thank you, Joe, for your hard work. Great that we're saving even more money. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Appointments.
L seven, I make a motion that Barbara Sack be appointed to the Human Relations Commission for the balance of a two-year term beginning immediately and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
L twelve, excuse me. I make a motion that Christine Pettit be appointed to fill a vacancy as an alternate to the Unionville Historic Commission for a three-year term beginning immediately and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Dave, do you have anything?
No.
You guys? All right. M, we have no old business. So go to N one, please.
N one, I make a motion to set the twenty twenty-six town council meeting schedule.
Second.
Motion second. Kathy?
Listed as the town council meeting schedule, in the note, I noticed it says the town council budget schedule. It should be the town council meeting schedule, just so. See an error there. As you can see, that's our typical schedule. I did add our second meetings in the month. I also added a few extra meetings back onto the budget schedule, just in case we need them. So they are listed also. And then there's our annual town meeting, referendum, and then the budget workshops.
Any questions for Kathy?
Yes. Kathy, I noticed there's three meetings for January.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Patty. I added an extra meeting for January because I think we're going to need one with the new town council. So I did put a second one in. The first meeting typically will be the introduction stuff and then the next two meetings would, one be going over potentially the strategic plan and then the last meeting starting to get into the budget and things like that. So we have usually on, when the new council starts, we usually have a third meeting. We don't usually put it on here. We usually do it at the first one. If you guys would prefer to do it that way, we could do it that way either, whatever you like.
My preference would be to do it as a special meeting just because, to keep it consistent with our rules of procedure and how we have it set up.
Okay, so then we just get rid of the twentieth.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
N two, make a motion to approve the attached property tax refunds.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions?
You got anything this time, Joe? You good?
Still drawing a zero. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have no executive session. I want to thank everybody for coming out. I see my scout class is here for more questions about government and stuff. We can answer them all for you later. We'll call for an adjournment, please.
Make a motion to adjourn the November tenth, twenty twenty-five town council meeting.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.